Good evening. Welcome to our Monday, May 15, 2023 Voting Meeting of the Exeter Township School Directors. Please note, a Personnel Committee meeting was held on May 7. An executive session was held prior to tonight's meeting as well to discuss personnel and security items. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Feig, can you please take your call?
Dr. Ann Herring.
Present.
John Fidler.
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Jason Mel.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Robert Quinter. Julie Schaefer.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. With nine board members present, we're also joined at the table by Solicitor Sharon Montaine and Dr. Kristy Haller Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Diane Skravakie Director of Human Resources, and Brian Feig, who serves as Business Administrator and Board Secretary. Okay, first thing on the agenda is a recognition of our Exeter Township District Music Department. The Reading Music Foundation recognized the Exeter School District's team of music educators for being named one of N A M M's 2023 Best Communities for Music Education. This prestigious designation is determined by surveying funding of the program, participation in music education, standards for your program, community, and other factors that affect access to comprehensive music education. We're very proud of our department, Music Department. Kristy.
So we have a number of our music educators here with us in the audience this evening, and if I could have you, I am going to embarrass you all. Could I have you all stand up? And if you could come to the podium and introduce yourself in your role in the district? And then I'm going to ask Mrs. Karati, our Music Chair Department, who does a fantastic job, just say a couple of words about our Music Department. Because our Music Department is awesome and they deserve this recognition.
Micah Albright, I teach orchestra at the Junior High School and Senior High School.
I'm Lorraine Selke, and I teach band and music electives at the high school.
I'm Emily Rupper, I do strings in band at the three elementary schools.
Nina Deleski, I teach general music at Lorraine.
Melissa Karati, I teach the chorus and a bunch of electives at the junior high, and then I also serve as the K through 12 Department Chair. So, words about the Music Department. I love our Music Department, and I love Exeter because they work so well together. So, we're very active. We like to perform all the time and anywhere that is willing to listen to us perform because we kind of teach the students that when you're performing, you're bringing joy to yourself. And then we invite others for a moment to come in and partake in our own joy, and we share it. So, we're not getting nervous when we perform in front of others. We're just excited to share what makes us happy. And so, we do that from little all the way up, and we have a wonderful time. And the recognition that we received is actually a best community of music education. So, it's not just the department. It is all of the teachers, all of the parents, all of the students, all of the administrators, and everybody who lives and works in Exeter. So, thank you.
Could I just say something? I was at the Music Cal at Lorraine the other day, and it was just fantastic. Great job.
Wonderful. Okay, next is recognition for the Senior High School Basketball Coach, Matthew Ashcroft. Mr. Legath?
Thank you for having us tonight. Our Coach Matt Ashcroft, our boys' basketball coach, this year was named the Berks County Coach of the Year, which was voted on by his peers, which is a tremendous honor. That was in February. And then, just a week ago in May, he was voted by sportswriters in Pennsylvania as the 5A Coach of the Year. I don't know, in my timeframe, anywhere that this has ever happened to a coach that they were named the Pennsylvania Coach of the Year. So, this is just a huge honor. Matt's in his fourth year with us. He, last year, we went to the state tournament. This year, we went to the county final for the first time since 1974. There's a lot of same dates here that happened in 1974 to this year. And this year, we won our first-ever District 3 5A championship. And then, we went on to the state tournament and made it to the state championship for the first time since 1974. So, it was just a, I use the word memorable when I talk about this season. It was just a memorable season. We have some of Coach Ashcroft's players here. Zion Pachel, Anthony Kachazie, and Teddy Snyder. Raise your hand, guys. And joined by Matt is his mother and his wife, Becca in the back with their daughter Mason. So, the one thing that Matt, and when he was named Coach of the Year in May, I kind of thought in April, he had a chance to get this. And going through some of our season, you know, when we went to the county final against Reading, and in preparation for that, I would get emails from Matt, which is typically normal around 10 o'clock after a game, 11 o'clock, which is nothing. And as we made our run through the district tournament, the emails would start to get midnight, 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning. And there were many a times during our state title run where he would call me at 10:30. My kids knew by now, Dad is at Matt Ashcroft. Yes. And I would say, "What are you doing?" And this is 10:30 at night. He goes, "Well, I'm going in the office to watch film." And he's like, "That's where I can focus, that I can concentrate." And up to the state final, on that Thursday night, I was getting emails at 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, and 5:00 in the morning. So, the preparation just increased the farther we went, which is just a tribute to him and everything he's done and for the boys of what they accomplished this year. So, boys, could you please go grab what we got for Coach Ashcroft? Coach, if you'd like to come up and say a couple of words?
Good evening. I try to keep this short and sweet. I just thought I'd start by saying how humbled I am to be a part of such a special program and to be named, you know, the 5A Coach of the Year. I know when I found out about it, I, you know, got pretty emotional. And, you know, we don't do it for these individual accolades or anything like that. But I think the neatest thing about it is, I think, when a team comes together and thinks about the process and everything that goes into it, when you take care of the team element, you know, things like these take care of themselves. Zion and Cheese being, you know, being first-team all-county as well as all-state. A lot of those individual accolades happen by way of a team. So, anyway, I just wanted to spend just a minute or two just to kind of thank some folks. I wanted to start with my wife Rebecca, my mother Karen. You know, working, obviously, having a full-time job on top of coaching. The months of November to March can really be taxing on a family and obviously raising a little girl. So, I just wanted to obviously, you know, thank my wife Rebecca. Wanted to thank Tom Legath for everything he and the athletic department have done for our program. And, you know, he's absolutely right. I can be a bit of a hound during the season, you know, with requests, gym time, gym availability, stuff like that. So, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank Tom and obviously his team. The Exeter community was absolutely fabulous. You know, our booster club, Aunt Kachazie's here tonight. Our coaching staff wouldn't have been possible without our coaching staff and our players. And then, I just wanted to spend a minute just to talk about three of our seniors here. They were our captains. And these guys, kind of, it's, it was kind of neat to think about the journey that we've been on because we've been on this journey together, right, guys? This was our, they were our first-class here when we were, when we came in back in 2019, 2020. They were freshmen. So, we've been through some trials and tribulations. Their sophomore year, we were 3-14. So, to see, that was a tough year. You know, we had, what, five games canceled due to COVID. We were 3-14. You know, we played two games in a day at that point. I think that was the last game of our season, right? We played Connor Weiser and Wilson in a doubleheader. That doesn't happen. So, you know, we've been through a lot. These guys have been through a lot. And the maturity that these three guys have shown, the resilience, the toughness, and the maturity that these three guys, you know, I have friends that, you know, in their 30s that don't have the maturity. And I think the perspective that these kids have showed, that our team has shown, and it's, I can tell you, it's all because of our three captains, Teddy, Anthony, and Zion. So, just wanted to take, you know, take a moment and have a round of applause for these three young men. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations, Coach. And those that are here for the presentation, you can stay for the budget or you're welcome to leave if you don't want to. It's understandable completely. We're going to jump up, if y'all don't mind, to the Superintendent's report with Dr. Haller.
So, instead of waiting until after the budget presentation, I'd just like to take a couple of moments to recognize our Music Department and Matt Ashcroft. Last week, the district celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week and National Nurses Week. And one week simply does not say enough to recognize the staff of the Exeter Township School District. Tonight, in attendance in our audience, we have our Music Department, who we've just acknowledged for their outstanding achievement in supporting and enhancing our program. And we're also here honoring Matt Ashcroft, our high school boys' basketball coach. And I would like to say that coaches such as Matt, while not a teacher, quote unquote, also play an important role in supporting our students and helping them grow and learn. We are very fortunate here in Exeter to have dedicated teachers, nurses, coaches, and our unsung heroes that work behind the scenes each and every day at our schools, such as our aides, our food services staff, facilities, secretaries, and of course, our transportation department. So, in closing, I would like to thank all of you for the impact that you have made this year. And I know that you will continue to make in your succumb in our district. So, thank you very much for everything that you do for our students. And now, the real fun begins because we're going to talk about the budget once again. So... So, Sheldon has assured me that the clicker is working tonight, so we shall see. So, tonight, we're going to be going over our 23-24 proposed budget overview. So, moving on to our first slide. Just a reminder of where we do get our district dollars. It's a secret that 67% of it comes from our local taxpayers, which is a little over $55 billion. The next portion comes from the state, which is approximately 31%. And then, only 2% comes from the federal government, and that money is earmarked, and districts have to use it for very specific, specific things. In the proposed state budget, which has not passed yet, and we do not anticipate that it'll pass till, we're hoping July, even though school districts must pass theirs by June 30th, is there is some, there's some information out there that there will be new funding available that will most likely impact us in the area of school-based mental health money. Potential, there is potential for money to help us with some types of repairs, specifically focusing in on environmental pieces, such as if you had things like asbestos that needed to be removed. There's, in the new, in the governor's budget, there is increased funding for basic education and special education funding. And we anticipate that the funding will be level for the school safety and security funding, as well as, for us, school safety initiatives. The governor's budget does include decreased funding in the Ready-to-Learn Block Grant and pupil transportation. However, at this time, Exeter's funding in that area in the Ready-to-Learn Block appears to be the same. So, in this next chart is a breakdown of how we spend, how the district spends the money. Where does the money go? And as in most budgets, the majority of it comes from salaries and benefits. And then, the rest is broken up into other categories, such as debt service, which has been a heavy focus for the board over the last several months because that was a little over 10%. And now, it's been reduced to 7%, which is at a significant cost savings. And it's one of the few areas where districts maintain some control over their budget. We have other purchased services, supplies, professional services, purchased property services, and then, the lease amount is on, is on property. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Feig to expand upon any of those areas that there may be questions for.
It's probably hard to read this, but let's go back to other purchased services, 7%. The majority of that is our cyber tuition and tuition for district out-of-school placements. Very small portion of that is telecommunications and printing services. Supplies, everyone thinks pen and paper, but that also includes textbooks, field trips, software, technology, gas to heat the buildings, gas to drive the cars, electric to run the buildings, cleaning products, paper. You know, our supply budget increased about $1 million from '22 to '23 because almost all those areas doubled, if not tripled. You know, toilet paper tripled, paper towels doubled. Gas lane from the previous year contract has doubled. You know, we purchase most of those things through consortiums, so we get the best bang for our buck. We're hoping to see decreases in the, like in the gas lane, we have a maximum amount, but they do split the difference if it goes down. So, if we do see a decrease in gas prices or diesel prices to run the buses, we might have some savings there. But right now, we're going on what we know will be the prices. Professional services are, you know, basically professional services that we don't do in-house. Mental health, staff services, special education contractors, testing, legal and auditing services. Purchased property services or contracts to repair and maintain our equipment that we don't have the expertise in-house or the licensed individuals to be able to maintain those. And then, property is really replacement of existing property, either new or replacements, such as, you know, you could say pickup trucks. We have 10 pickup trucks over the next five years to be replaced. But also, things like flooring, desks, you know, computers, you know, anything that we would capitalize, you know, and depreciate over time. But as Kristy said, salaries and benefits, you know, make up 73% of our budget. I think if you go into benefits, 10% of that of the benefit costs is strictly the health and medical. But as everyone knows, our pension system in Pennsylvania, we're putting in, next year, it actually went down. It was 34.9. This year, next year's 34%. They're expected to go back up the following year. You know, but the reason it actually went down is because of inflation. They're able to make more money on the pension plan than in previous years, so they're able to drop a little bit. But that can fluctuate, you know, over the years. I guess we can go on?
Mr. Feig, when we talked about building in our maintenance schedule from now on, where would that go on that, was that under the property section?
Well, both property services and the replacement, which is purchased, or, yeah, other purchased services and professional services, if it's maintaining or purchased property services, repair, maintenance of property. In the budget, when we came out with a capital plan, I took out everything that was less than 15 years for the capital plan, which we're going to decide this summer. And, you know, we've restructured the debt that it will allow us to keep that 7% debt service. Right now, it's a lot less than that because we don't have the additional capital that we're going to borrow. But to keep that up to $20 million of borrowing. But when we did the plans, we went through everything that needs to be done in the next five years. And we separated anything out that had a life less than 15 years. And in this budget, and for the next five years, that amount totaled about $2.5 million. So, we broke it out to about $400,000 to $500,000 a year. That's going to be, as we call, maintenance property services, you know, replacing pickup trucks, you know, things that do not have a 15-year life. You know, my feeling is you don't borrow on a 12-year or 13-year note that something's going to last you eight years. My feeling was that it should at least last 15 years. You know, your equipment that you're paying for should be longer than the life of the bonds or what your debt is. Did that answer your question? Okay.
So, one of the goals of the administration with the board has been to create a budget that is balanced. I know, it's a very cool graphic, isn't it? You know, we wanted to jazz it up since this is like the 10th presentation. And so, again, this is, means that our expenditures would equal our revenue. So, that's something that has been a big focus for us throughout this process. So, what exactly does that look like now that we are towards the end of, of the process? And you'll notice that the bottom number has changed. So, our expenditures, as Brian worked through them, as we worked through them with each of the departments, each of the buildings, came out to a little over $83 million. And again, the bulk of that is, again, salary and benefits. And your next highest piece, of course, is your debt service. So, by going through that restructuring, that's the area which had the most impact on how we were able, or how Brian was able to really manage where we were as far as expenditures. The revenue that Brian is anticipating is coming in at a little over $83 million. The last time we were together as a board, you may recall that there was an identified, almost surplus, if you say, of approximately, I believe it was $69,000. You'll notice that that number has gone up considerably. And you're probably asking, asking why? And that's a good question. So, the reason why that money, that amount has gone up is because we have received more information from the federal government at this point through title grants, indicating that we are receiving at this time a little over another $100,000. That is not finalized, that is anticipated. Why are we receiving that money? Well, part of it is because, as we've talked about, especially as Mrs. Harrison, Dawn Harris, has talked about, our demographics in Exeter is changing. And title is basically considers your number of students and also your demographics. So, does that mean that we're getting it solely based on what our demographics look like? Possibly, possibly not. The reason why is because there could be another districts whose demographics is changing and their number is actually decreasing. So, they're losing funding and we're gaining funding. We don't really know that. But at this point, we know that we are receiving increased funding at this time. This is not the final allocation. This is the preliminary allocation that we've received. So, I'm going to turn it over to Brian to answer or talk a little bit more about how that works.
Title programs, you know, the budget actually comes out. This time, they give us a estimated allocation. You cannot start spending that to September. It runs from September through August. And April, they give you your final allocations, and they make you go back in and do what they call funding adjustments and redo your budgets on the federal level. What was interesting is, I just did those this past Thursday because they were due by the 15th. They gave us like two weeks to do the funding adjustments. And we actually increased last year slightly in all the title grants, which is unheard of. So, you know, Kristy said, "Is that because we have more higher demographics?" And it's either we have higher demographics that qualify for title or other places have lower, and we just got a bigger piece of the pie. So, you know, it's, I'm not 100% sure how the formula works, but I know it's based on your demographics. And it's based on everyone's demographics to see who gets what. So, either we increased and need or others decreased. But, so, we saw that three weeks ago when we got the funding adjustments for last year, which gave us about $20,000 total in all the title programs. The allocation for next year shows us about $100,000 more. Now, knowing the other districts in the county, almost all of them remained flat, and a couple went down. So, you know... There, it's, as kids moving and, you know, needs move, the state, or actually, this is federal, changes theirs. So, we put the actual numbers in that we expect. Now, they could change next, next April again when they do the final allocations and give us funding adjustments. But normally, it's very close to what they estimate it as. And I think Julie, who we have on retainer right now, was surprised. She never saw an increase in adjustments. So, that sort of made the flag. But when I got the next year allocations, that was increased. It's probably our demographics changed, but I can't say that for sure.
Is that money, I'm sorry, does that money specifically need to be allocated for something?
Well, it needs to be allocated to schools, and we use them. Kristy, I can go back over exactly what we use, but we cannot, we have positions that it can be used for. So, instead of coming out of general tax dollars, it's coming out of title tax dollars.
These, the grants, whether it's the Ready-to-Learn Block Grant or the title grants, titles 1, 2, 3, or 4, which receive money for each one of those grants, they are earmarked for certain expenditures. They are earmarked, um, for certain expenditures. So when, uh, your administration, when a district's administration receives those allocations, there's basically buckets. In which the, uh, school administration allocates that money for. Over the last number of years, the majority of the school districts use that money for, uh, paying for positions. Um, or in our case, for the ready to learn block grant, which is a state grant, we use it to pay for full day kindergarten. That's how the district's been paying that for that for a number of years. So what this allows us to do is it allows, um, us to have a little bit, it's a little bit looser now. When I say looser, as far as we can use, we can add more money to someone's salary through title. Um, and as Brian said, back it out, um, from the general fund. So it is, it is a help.
Yeah, I mean, in the previous years, we've been charging about seventy five percent of certain individual salaries. They can move that up to eighty or. Or ninety percent, but it's, we're not adding any positions. We're just covering more of their salaries. You know, of something they're doing a hundred percent of the time anyway.
We're almost there. I'm ninety percent there. What, what kind of posi- are we just any teacher or math teachers? Or social studies teachers or reading teachers or? Learning specialists or what?
Even reading specialists. And, um, we have two buildings in the district that are title, title, um, one buildings. It's Loraine. And it's Jacksonwell. So it's the salaries of those reading specialists that are partially covered under title one. Um, and then there is, there is paperwork that goes along with it where the, the teachers need to, um, complete paperwork on a monthly basis. Personally, there's a lot of tracking that needs to be done with students. Um, there are certain requirements that we have to, to meet with, uh, parent involvement activities. Uh, so there, there are very specific things when you take that money, um, in your title school that you have to meet. And when districts are audited, they, they look for those things, but that's how we use it.
Okay. And, and given our reading scores, this is extra good news.
Yes, and, and thankfully the board, um, saw the importance of adding reading specialists at that time. When we had a number of people retire, um, there was a reading specialist added. To each of the three elementary buildings, including a Watten, which is not a title building, um, but the need is there. And in order to support our students who, who are struggling. And I think we have seen the, the pandemic has certainly really did a number on, on students and it's going to take a long time to recover.
Thank you. By the way, there was a, a story in the Times today by a specialist at Harvard and another one at Stanford. Which I've sent to the board and to you. It just shows that the pandemic really, really did a number, apparently a bigger number on us than we thought. So, thank you.
So the steps that the, the administration took to, to, to balance the budget was the big one was the restructuring of the debt. Um, the second one was we looked at our positions very critically and we looked to eliminate positions. Uh, and then the third, which I don't think anyone anticipated, which was really unforeseen, was the, the interest. Um, the interest rates went up and, and the district received, uh, over a million dollars in interest. That we certainly were not anticipating. And while hoping and praying is not a strategy, I think we're all going to be doing that for the next budget. In anticipation that that will, that will continue. So tonight we're presenting three, uh, different tax scenarios because we think it's important that you, that you have options. Again, we're coming to you for a balanced budget and this is great news that we've received, uh. More funding that we were not anticipating. And again, we're very hopeful that the governor's budget will come through as presented. Um, but just as a reminder, um, based on what Governor Wolf proposed last year and then what school districts actually received. I believe it came out to be approximately forty percent. Uh, when Brian was going through the budget this year and putting together our budget, again, he anticipated forty percent. So it still is an increase and we're hopeful that we'll get the hundred percent and that will be great. Um, so we have a zero percent, which keeps our taxes stable. A, a point five percent, which slightly increases the mills, which for the average taxpayer would be about nineteen dollars. Increase for your taxes. Um, and then point seven five, which again slightly increases and for the average tax. Or for the homeowner would be, um, a little over twenty, I think it's twenty six dollars. And then, uh, obviously next year we'll start again, um, and these are just projected numbers. Because who could have thought that we have got, would have gotten a hundred thousand dollars at like the eleventh hour. Um, but you know, with all scenarios being the same, you know, we'll start looking at the budget. Pretty much immediately after this budget is passed and, and working through what we anticipate for next year. Again, it's, it's unfortunate, but it is based completely on assumptions.
Dr. Haller, I also think it's important that we remind the public that these numbers we're seeing here. We're creating a balanced budget, but we're not taking out of reserves. And that's something that we've been doing, I think for quite some time, if I remember that slide from last time, several years. And so, so the, what we're seeing here is, is truly, this is.
Truly a balanced.
This is raw balanced budget without, without pulling anything from reserve.
For the last ten years, every budget was using or budgeted to use out of reserves. During New Year, uncertain years, they were able to actually break even, but the budget wasn't even as they were able to cut expenses. Uh, the other thing I wanted to note is in December, we gave around one of the first look. In December, we had a three point two million dollar deficit first look. Uh, we are over a hundred thousand dollar surplus oriented. And I think we'd said all along, it's working on assumptions, it's working through, but we wanted to make sure the board knew exactly where we were. And we had a meeting at every building because we knew that there's a lot of capital needs and we've been finding those things and we want everyone to see those. Projects that have to be done, you know, because in previous years it always came down to the last minute. And then they cut out the capital projects or maintenance projects and, you know, you get to a point that. You can't do it anymore. You have to pay the piper. So, uh, I just, I'm, I'm hoping everyone would appreciate the way we did the budget this year. Um, and try to show it through there. And I also, uh, gave projections for next five years. Uh, I think it's on the bottom here too. Uh, I want to be honest that, you know, with everything staying the same, we're probably looking at about two and a half percent tax increase next year. Not this year. You know, things could change very fast. I, I didn't expect us to have a million plus dollars in interest earnings this year. Because last year we were at, uh, point one at the highest, you know. And now we're getting four point seven five percent. And that makes a big difference, you know, especially when you're, you're collecting all your dollars upfront and spending them out by, by June. So you have a lot of money to invest during the year. And that, that actually is going to help us this year because inflation killed us on, on supplies, but. Interest earnings basically made up for it. So we're not going to have a deficit this year. Compared to what we were expecting.
And Brian, do all three of these scenarios result in a balanced budget?
Yes, zero percent results in three quarters, you know. If you're looking at a tax increase, that'd be to try to offset future increases, you know. Uh, that's, you know, I don't vote, as I said before, I, I brought you a balanced budget.
But I mean, a balanced budget is reflected in each one of these.
Yes.
Three scenarios.
And, and that's, and that was our goal this year to get down to that we're not robbing from Peter to pay Paul.
Right. Uh, another question, uh, about, and I know you've been here, what, three years and that was the pledge you made.
That's, that's what you hired me for.
Yeah. Do you, do you have any sense of history? How long has it been since this school district had a balanced budget?
Uh, it was two thousand and eleven's last one. And this is what's filed with BD. So it was two thousand and eleven was the last time they passed the budget. That had revenues greater than expenditures. Now, I'm saying, I'm ca- talking budget because during the year they made cuts and, you know, some years, you know, they actually came. In under budget, so they balanced it. They didn't, they didn't take out of the surplus. Uh, but if they wouldn't have over that ten year period, it would have been almost twenty million dollars. You know, so they're, they've been cutting it down. Like the first year I got here. They had a, a, a budget was approved to three point two million use of fund balance. Uh, I was able to get that down to roughly two point two million dollars use of fund balance. The second year we split the budget in half to one point six million. We were down to one point one. This year we're down eight hundred thousand. I was hoping to get that down further, but inflation hit and I'm hoping we'll be right around there, you know. But, you know, this. And you're talking eight hundred thousand, that's only one percent room for mistake, if you want to call it that. So we, we, we watched the budget the full year and, you know, uh, I know my first year. We cut out all new purchases starting February because we knew it was not going to be there. We just had to do that.
Thank you.
So we, as an administration, have been, uh, very thoughtful about this budget process. Uh, and wanted to be sure that, uh, we provided multiple opportunities. For the community to be engaged in the process, especially because we knew. Uh, that the, uh, facilities was a, was a major issue. So, you know, when we were talking about it. And talking about things and how it was going to impact, uh, the, the, the budget, we wanted people to be able to see it. And, uh, this presentation along with, uh, all the other presentations from those, the building visits. And all of the presentations we've done here thus far, including tonight, are on our website. So you can track the progression. Uh, but this is where we are. We're, we're very pleased with, uh, the fact that we can provide different scenarios. All of which provide you with a balanced budget without taking from your fund, uh, from your fund balance. Uh, so for, oh, we have, we have good options. Um, and we can certainly go the zero percent and. Um, that, getting that extra money was not anticipated. Uh, and again, we don't know what the, the governor's budget is going to look like, but we are cautiously optimistic. I will say that. Um, and then, once we put this one to rest, we will be starting to work on the other one immediately. And, you know, who knows where we'll ultimately land this time next year, but this is, this is where we are. And I believe this is the last, this is the last slide. Um, so these are your, your final steps. So, um, tonight, because you have to do it by May thirty first, um, you have to adopt a proposed final budget. By June thirtieth, you have to adopt your final budget, which will be at the June twentieth meeting. And then, um, July one, that's when the tax bills will go to Saint Lawrence and, uh, Exeter Township, uh, tax contractors.
Uh, just to clarify as well, the two point five percent increase the administration's recommending. Um, for next budget year, that is under the assumption that we're maintaining the current level of programs and services.
That, that's maintaining exactly the status quo. And that's using, you know, everything we know. We know what the, the contract rates increases are. We know. You know, guesstimating another nine or eight percent and, and, uh, healthcare benefits. Uh, we know that pieces could go probably up a percent. You know, assuming that electric and, and gas and those things stabilize. Um, I'm hoping they, they stabilize. Um, but it's, I don't want to call it best guess, but it is best guess. And I have about five years, you know. And things could change. Who would have thought that we'd have eight percent inflation at the end of the year? And thi- this year we, we were, I don't want to say unlucky. But we had to drop off the consortium for purchasing gasoline and diesel. Because the consortium, you had to take a minimal quantity of five thousand gallons of delivery. And we could not do that in, in temporary tanks because we had the old tanks had to be ripped up and replaced. The new tanks are in place and we're back on the consortium pricing. So we, we, we did have in last year's budget that we would have paid a probably. One and three quarters times, but we ended up paying twice the amount because of, uh, inflation, you know. But, you know, I, I, I do a five year plan. I hate even saying what a three year plan is because things change so fast, you know. And we also, you know, think about it, we also have a lawsuit that the state has to figure out. How to equitably fund schools in the future. From what I'm seeing from legislators and with PASW, my, my school business officials group. Uh, it's probably going to be three or four years till we actually have a, a resolution by the state. I think it was California. One of those states had the same lawsuit and that drug out for twelve years, but they also appealed it. Which I don't think our legislator is going to appeal it. So, uh, I have a feeling they're going to start working on some type of equitable. Funding relationship. I don't think they'll deal with real estate taxes, but hopefully some type of equity. Be towards, um, funding per student or whatever, because right now, you know. We're seventy percent local, where there's districts that are eighty percent state. You know, some districts have, have had to raise their taxes in seven, eight years because they're eighty percent state funded.
Thank you.
So and of course, you know, as Brian said, things could change. One of the, uh, areas of focus for school districts, for school boards. Uh, which is really gaining traction is the conversation about cyber school. And its impact on school districts, especially school districts that offer their own, like we do. Um, so, and we, we contend that ours is, is a better option. Um, but yet we are still forced to pay a little over a million dollars for another option at the, at the rate that. We pay to educate our own students, whereas cyber charter schools do not. Have to maintain buses and serve lunches and maintain buildings, but yet they're, they're getting that, that same amount of money. So we're hopeful that there will be some movement on, uh, that, that conversation at the state level. As well as many of the other unfunded mandates that are not only just impacting Exeter, but other districts as well. Um, and that's something that, you know, as we continue to go through the, the budget process moving forward in years to come. We will continue to keep the board, um, you know, aware of what is the, the big impacts and what's being done. Uh, at our level and at the state level. Uh, but that's, that's where we are right now. And of course, no one can anticipate the future. But just tracking expenditures, that's what Brian anticipates. Um, as I said, the, the debt service was, was the biggest ticket item that as a school board you can manage. And you've done that. So the next biggest ticket items that school districts can manage is, is personnel. Um, salary and benefits. So the only other way, because, you know, you. You need to buy gas, you need to keep the lights on, you need to keep the water running, um, is by looking critically at programs and that means your people. Um, so that's where you start to look at things like class size and activities that are not mandated. Um, and, you know, I think we have a, a great school district. We offer a lot for our families. And that's why it's really hard right now to buy a house in Exeter. And so that's something that people want. Um, and so it's the board along with assistance from the administration by giving you the numbers and our recommendations. You know, that's a conversation, you know, for the future, but this is, this is where we are today.
Dr. Haller, first of all, Mister Fike, thank you for all the work that you and the administrative team have done. I like this format a lot. My ask is that, is it possible that we can, moving forward now, get quarterly updates? To see how we're tracking to the current year's budget that we're in. At the Cow meeting quarterly. Is that something we can start doing?
Oh yeah, definitely. Uh, right now we're, we're giving you the, the budget's actual numbers, but. It, it's hard to really tell because we're always a month or two behind, but we, we can actually do a quarterly and where we project to be. How's that sound? Instead of just the actual, because, you know, there's certain bills like, you know, my accounts payable versus all sets like. I got five million dollars of bills this month. Well, yeah, because we have principal due on our debt, which, you know, in the fall, we only had interest due. Now we have principal due. So you have to look at the full picture so we can, instead of doing quarterly updates on where we stand. Quarterly updates on where we project the, the year would be better.
Yeah, that's fine. I just. Yeah, that's fine. I just, you know, we want to make sure that we're tracking our expenditures. And, you know, to your point, it's volatile right now with interest rates and inflation. Things go up, things go down. It'd be good to know where we're seeing opportunities for savings, where we have to spend more, and if we fail, as though we're going to be under over budget as we progress through the year.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
And just to confirm, the treasurer's report will have those percentages every month as well in the voting meeting?
Oh, yes, definitely.
But it would be nice to have something that's more presentable to the public.
No, no, I I agree. It's a short instead of a. Twenty or thirty page with lines you don't really understand what, yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Haller and Mr. Pike. Tonight, we won't be amending the agenda, so we'll move on to public comment relating to tonight's agenda, in which we will be following Board Policy. Nine zero three regarding public participation in board meetings. I'd like to emphasize that each statement must be by a particip- uh, must be made by a participant, shall be limited to four minute duration. First commenter is Jerry Gelof. Please state your name and address.
Jerry Gelof, one oh six, Michelle Drive in Farming Ridge. Good evening, everybody. A couple of things I wanted to touch on. Number one is the budget. I want to thank you for a very deliberate process that you held to all year long. You did a great job presenting this to us, what, ninety two times? You presented it. You you presented it many times. The public needed to see that, okay? I personally appreciate the fact that you brought a budget with no use of reserves. That is a truly balanced budget. It's something we don't see here in Exeter. We don't see it from across town, and we haven't seen it from the school board. So I appreciate that. The other thing is that Christie and Brian did a great job presenting this budget to the public all those times. And the fact that you were honest and came up with a projection for a tax hike next year, if we go at zero. That we're going to need a two point five percent tax hike. I appreciate that honesty. That kind of truthfulness is really commendable. And it shows a lot of moxie. The other thing I wanted to talk about was Matt Ashcroft. I'm happy to see that you folks recognized. My buddy Matt Ashcroft tonight. He showed us a lot of grace this basketball season, because I know that he was up, as Tom said, he was up late nights. Because I received texts from him one in the morning, asking me this, that, or the other question about whether we're covering a game. So I know he was up late, looking at uh, looking at films, things of that nature. One night, he called me. I I texted him one simple little question, which would have been a four word answer. And he called me. Ten seconds later, my phone rang, and we're on the phone for half an hour. He's like, dude, don't you want to go to sleep? He's like, ah, no, I'm actually at work. I I I had to leave for the game and and then now I got to get caught up on work, and then I got to look at film. When are you going to sleep? So everything he does is during the basketball season is with the kids in mind. He teaches them. He teaches them how to play the game. He doesn't just yell out instruction. If you go to a game and you watch him, he's always up. He's passionate. He's he he he's up so much. That during one of the home playoff games this year, the folks who came from the Pittsburgh area were yelling at him. Sit down, sit down. They couldn't take it because he was completely exercised. So he brought a lot of great things to this basketball team. And he taught the kids, and the kids learned so much. One time in post game interview, we asked him. That that's, you know, something had gone wrong in the first half and they were behind, and then they came back and they just completely obliterated that problem. And they they corrected it. So I asked him, Matt, what what did you do? What did you tell them to correct that problem? And he said, we didn't tell them anything. They corrected it on their own because they understand the game. They understand the game because he and his coaching staff teach them properly, to your point about teaching. So I appreciate the fact that you folks recognized him and the team. And I'm not afraid to make this prediction. This was the first time that you saw Exeter in a state final. You will see them there again, and when you see them there again, they're going to win.
Thank you, Mr. Gelof. Next is board meeting minutes. If there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's board meetings, April fourth, twenty twenty three, special voting meeting. And board committee of a whole meeting, as well as April eighteenth, twenty twenty three, board voting meeting. Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Treasurer's report and payment requests, if there's no objection, will adopt a motion to approve the February twenty twenty three treasurer's report and payment request stated April nineteenth to May fifteen, twenty twenty three. Hearing no objections, the treasurer's report and payment requests are approved. Next, education committee, Dr. Batler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Under enrollment report, excuse me, my nose is wrong. Under enrollment report, enrollment report. Out of school, out of district, monthly board report and district board report. Does anybody have any questions? Nope. Hearing no objections, that is approved. Number, letter B, it is reported that senior high student has been given permission to attend Exeter Township Senior High School as a non-resident student. Senior for the remainder of the twenty two, twenty three school year in accordance with policy two oh two eligibility of non-resident students. Any discussion? No, hearing no objection. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Can I have a second?
Yep.
It's a report.
It's a report.
It's not a motion.
No. Yeah. I didn't know if you wanted me to read all of these, but I was like, okay. It is reported that the field trips below within the sixty mile radius have been approved, items one through seven. Okay, hearing no objections, moving on. And letter D, uh, there's one and two. Number one, the following field trips beyond a sixty mile radius. The senior high school twelfth grade class will be traveling to Hershey Park for their end of year class trip on June sixth. Any discussion?
Uh, Dr. Batler, tonight, this is a.
Second, I know. I apologize. I sneeze so many times.
I was going to request that on the consent agenda that we could pull out item number three for the TIPS contract and vote on that separately.
Yes.
So I will need to abstain from it.
So do we want to get a second on number one and go from there?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following education committees. Number two, the following list of staff conferences. And there were three added.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following education committee items. The tuition agreements between Ellen Opportunity School and the Exeter Township School District. The tuition agreement between Deveraux Foundation, the Exeter Township School District, and the agreement between Richard J. Karen, Exeter Township School District, as well as the agreement between Inspired Wellman.
I'm sorry, did you want to just do three by itself?
Well, I was doing all of these and then going back to three. Do you want me to do that?
Can I confirm, are we doing all the items in the consent agenda separately? Is that was that the plan?
I can now.
Okay.
I was just going to do.
Four through seven?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to follow over.
Sorry.
So can we?
Second.
Okay, we have a second.
Yeah, so that was.
A motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And coming back to item three, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following education committee item. The teacher in the parks contract for the fully inclusive TIPS programming option at the flat rate fee of eight thousand dollars. And a per student cost of three hundred and twenty five dollars for approximately a hundred and fifty students. Cost of tips will be paid through ESR funds for the twenty two, twenty three summer program. Cost for parents is a hundred and twenty five dollars for the summer. Scholarships will be provided based on need. This program will be offered to current kindergarten through fourth grade students entering fifth grade.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we have a quick presentation regarding it.
So we were asked at the last board meeting just to present to the community what more, like what the curriculum looks like for TIPS. So Mr. Hathaway is actually here, and we also brought a sampling of the materials that we will be using. So that way, the board can see exactly what the program entails.
Thank you, Dr. Haller. We've had two great opportunities over the last maybe five years or so. One is to have a custom made Teachers in the Parks program developed by the American Reading Company, who some of you may have heard of. To make sure that all of our microdrudge curriculum is the best that it can be, aligned to our summer curriculum. And then the materials they make for us include the interactive read alouds, the shared reading materials, and also the independent reading materials. So that teachers have a resource that's different than the regular school year, but still meeting our academic rigor and standards. The other opportunity that we had, we met the founder of an organization called Mango Math. They're out of California. They create some of the best math game based curriculum. And they actually make a custom product called Teachers in the Parks just for us now, which is super neat. They took all of our Pennsylvania curriculum and they developed and kind of moved their materials around what we were doing to make sure that. Every teacher, pre K through six, actually, could have the materials that they need over the summer. Dr. Hamburger had asked to clarify, and I know we have another slide. The programming will run, I believe it's June twenty sixth through August third, Monday through Thursday, from the hours between nine and roughly eleven, eleven thirty, depending on the session. We staff at a ratio of one to ten for our youngest children and a ratio of one to twelve, based on an eighty percent attendance rate. Eighty percent attendance might not sound great, but nationwide, the average is around forty percent for attendance for summer programs. So we're actually very proud of that number. The, what else did I have up there? All classes are taught by certified teachers and all teachers and supervisors for the site are required to go through a three hour Teachers in the Parks training. We, I just, I think I just shared that earlier, to make sure that it's meeting the district standards. And this is kind of what Teacher in the Parks is becoming known for, is making sure that we're able to transition students successfully through the summer. We figured out through work with Albright a few years ago that we're able to transition a student, a student's reading rate throughout the entire summer. So that when they leave in June, they're coming back with that same reading rate in the fall. And we also figured out that basic math skills at a grade level, we can transition students smoothly through the summer with roughly six hours, four to six hours of instruction per week. Throughout the entire summer, throughout the the heart of the summer, anyway. We have a few weeks before, after school and a few weeks before school. Some super cool things that I'm I'm very proud of. The Teachers in the Parks Organization, which I I, in my mind, is synonymous with Exeter, was just asked to keynote at the Pennsylvania After School Youth Development Network just this spring. We are also a featured organization at Secretary Cardona's national launch of the Engage Every Student Initiative in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, actually. We just had that presentation in Washington. We were a featured organization in twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three at the United States Department of Education. We were the National Summer Learning Association's Summer Excellent Award winner, which is, we talked about in the fall. The most prestigious award in the nation for what we do in our small niche market. We were professional panelists at the National Conference in Washington in twenty one and twenty two. The NEA awarded us with the Award for Teaching Excellence in twenty twenty. We were presenter at the U.S. Senate in two thousand nineteen. PSEA awarded Teachers in the Parks Organization with the statewide Award for Human and Civil Rights and Education in two thousand nineteen. And the PA Parks and Recreation statewide Award for Best Community Practices in two thousand nineteen as well. And that compliment and all those compliments really belong to the Teachers of Exeter.
Is there any discussion?
Question. I guess, I guess for Matt, if if a family can't afford the one twenty five. What what do they what do they do? And are there opportunities for members of the communities to sponsor a the tuition for a child?
As it stands right now, Dr. Haller has designated roughly a hundred and fifty spots in the program that students could attend for free. Based on invitation by building principals, reading teams, and instructional support teachers. It's really who's making those recommendations. Anybody else would be paying the one twenty five, and if they couldn't, we've never turned away a student from Teachers in the Parks. It would be the discussion of this board, if we happen to go above one fifty, what we're going to do. But there's always been opportunity and a willingness from this community to support kids to come to the program.
And just so everyone knows, that is ESR funds that are being used, and that was an allowable expense expense for that of that money.
When is enrollment?
After you vote tonight. We typically, just to know typically, and just looking to the futures, if this is something that we want to continue, we typically start advertising in February. Opening registration in March and ending at the in early June.
Mr. Hathaway, just to play devil's advocate here, on your website, when you do have open enrollment for other districts. Could you explain why the cost currently for some other districts is ninety five versus the cost for Exeter at one twenty five?
Sure, the districts get to set their costs, is truthfully how that works. The majority of students don't pay anything. So they get to set that amount. Ninety five is our recommendation for any program. For Exeter, they decided at one twenty five to further offset the three twenty five cost per student because they're choosing to subcontract the entire service. So we recommend somewhere around that hundred dollar mark is what families want to afford over the summer. And some, you know, even have a hard time affording, which is why we always try to provide grants.
Now, your students, you you do Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday.
Correct.
If they choose to do four days, is there a discount to families if they do four days versus two?
No, there is not currently one built into this.
So it's two fifty and a week?
It would, yes, that would be correct. Well, for the summer. Yeah, not a week. No, no, no. Yeah, yes.
And and just to expand upon that, different districts are paying for it different ways. So there are some districts that receive more more funding than what Exeter does, or they receive a grant. So they they have the money to to spend on this. One of the things that, you know, we wanted to work through, because Matt is a teacher and now an administrator, we wanted to make sure that everything was transparent. As I said the last meeting, we wanted to make sure it was vetted with Sharon. We really took our time with this to make sure that everything was appropriate. And now it gives us time to start working on what does this look like for the future and and actively. I seek out grants to support summer learning here. So we've had some conversations about that.
I'm very happy to see this and that we're continuing this program. Thank you to the administration, Mr. Hathaway for, especially to all the work you and your team have done. I love the fact that we have our specialists inside our buildings that are identifying the students that need that extra help. And plus, able to open it up to the community as well. I think it lends to the entire plan that this administration is trying to build. With where we want to get to, and this is one more piece to that puzzle. So kudos to you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say too, looking at the materials, the the math set right there. You know, that really goes with what Dr. Hoyt was talking about when he was here a few months ago, when he was talking about having kind of like a game based activities to practice math skills with. And that's exactly what that is. So that's really awesome, too.
Just like to say, I I do support the TIPS program greatly, and I love what what Matt's done with it. Unfortunately, on my part, I will have to be abstaining from the vote because my spouse sits on the Board of Directors of TIPS.
Any further discussion?
Matt, I just had one question about, you know, the any assessments that we do. I mean, I think we all get a sense intuitively that the program is valued. And but I I wondered, have we, over the years, ever developed or refined a process where we can actually objectively demonstrate? That students are making progress, or at least not sliding as a result of the of the program that's being provided.
That's a great question. The answer is yes. So over the years, we use the Dibbles Assessment primarily. Now, that really goes down into reading rate. When we did the work with Albright, the problem with it is we have a six week program. Essentially, twelve to twenty four sessions worth of learning. It often takes two of those sessions, at least, one at the beginning, one at the end, to get the type of data that you need. What I would be very interested in is just working with the district to take our own end of the year data, our own beginning of the year data. So that we're not taking the quality of programming away from the children. So that that's where I see the value going forward. When we did the work with Albright, we were able to say that we can transition children, like I shared earlier, in reading and mathematics. When we did the work with Albright, we were able to say that we can transition children, like I shared earlier, um, in reading and mathematics, in gra- grade-level skills, anyway. Um, is that a comprehensive, you know, like end-all type of study? No, absolutely not. Uh, but it is far better than a lot of programs are able to, to say.
Yeah, I can understand that some logistical problems associated with the assessments. You know, uh, you know, but I do think, you know, i- if we wanna really establish that gold standard for credibility.
Sure.
You, you almost need to have some kind of a, an assessment. I was just kind of wondering whether or not you could sample, s- uh, s- have, have a sample of students that would be evaluated based upon volunteers. You know, let's say, let's say a student says, oh yeah, I'll be glad to come in and be evaluated before, after a parent maybe would agree to that.
Sure.
And, and you wouldn't necessarily have to evaluate all the kids, but maybe, you know, a, a sample of kids who would be randomly assigned.
And I, I agree with you, and I think a statistically significant number of children would be a hundred. You know, to get a hundred at a, at a varying, uh, bunch of grade levels to, to do that, I think that would be great. Um, one thing that we've tried to do over the years, take the best, uh, research that we've had, and then build our program based off of that research, especially out of the RAN Corporation. Um, and the National Summer Learning Association. So, in the meantime, before that study actually exists somewhere, uh, the last time we got a quote for a study that was third-party, it was roughly a hundred eighty thousand dollars, uh, to conduct that study, which is actually like three times the amount of our operating budget. Um, so that's just never been realistic to have a third-party vendor do it, but in-house, we could certainly try to pull that off.
Yeah, I just wanna finally just say just, you know, how I think proud I am to, to know that Exeter, that this is an Exeter uh, originated program, it has received national attention, that you yourself, as well as the program, have been, uh, uh, received the attention from experts throughout the country, you know, in summer learning, and I just want to thank you and commend you for the work that you've done to make this happen.
Well, I just wanna make sure the thank you goes both ways. Um, I, I, you might not recognize it, but, um, Exeter is well-known for summer learning. Um, and that, that's a tribute to the teachers and administration and the school board and the community who have supported for now nineteen years. Um, so, really, it's, um, it's an honor for me. So, thank you for your continued support.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Appreciate it. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Stay.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Battler. That's everything. Okay. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Schaefer?
Thank you, Dr. Herring. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the attached list of course requests.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. I just wanna highlight in bold, these are items that have been added or changed since the committee of the whole meeting on the consent agenda. So, um, under resignations, item A, for administrative staff, certificated staff, A, B, C, support staff, A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Under two appointments, administrative staff, A and B, certificated staff, A, B, C, D, extracurricular, A, support staff, A, B, C, D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Under change of status, support staff, items A, B, C, D, and E. And under leave of absence, item number four, the attached list of employees.
Second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Under extended school year and extended contracts, item five, there are four contracts listed, items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
That is it for the Personnel Committee, Dr. Herring.
Thank you very much. Finance, Facilities, and Audit Committee, Mr. Mel.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Uh, starting off with item A for the food service budget, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the final budget for the Food Service Department for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year with budgeted revenue of two million, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars and budgeted expenditures of two million, two-hundred-and-forty thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. See attachment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item B, it is recommended that the Board of S- uh, School Directors approve the proposed final general fund budget for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year with budgeted revenue of eighty-three million, four-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and budgeted expenditures of eighty-three million, two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Um, Brian, under the revenue section, um, you had forty-six thousand dollars listed. Is that including the advertising revenue? Did we increase that from last year?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Yes, we did. We're actually gonna have a presentation on the advertising at the June Cal meeting because we weren't able to fully implement it because the previous contracts are in place, but all those expire this year, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And lastly, item C, the consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following finance facilities and audit items. Items one, budget transfers. Items two, district participation in the Berks County Joint Pursaging, Purchasing Board. And item three, donations from Oz Group LLC to the Transportation Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just one thing. Uh, number three, donations for the Oz Group. Uh, Mr. Manning is in the audience today, and he was one of the, he, he was the gentleman that contacted the school district to try to find a way if we might be able to use this equipment. Um, you know, it certainly comes at a big cost savings to us, and I just wanted to recognize him and say, thank you, and we appreciate you looking out for us, and, you know, we appreciate everything.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dr. Herring, that is it for my committee report.
Okay, thank you very much. Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Dr. Herring. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following, uh, policies for first reading. Uh, policy zero-zero-six, policy two-oh-two, and policy two-oh-four. And then as well, uh, recommending second reading for policy, uh, two-hundred, enrollment of students.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thanks, Dr. Herring. That's all for my report.
Thank you. Athletics and Extracurricular, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, we had our music, um, department here tonight, and we do have a couple events, um, coming up, uh, to end our school year. It's hard to believe. Um, this week will be the Senior High School Choral Concert, and also the Jackson Wald Concert, um, and the High School Art Show. And then next week will be the Senior High Orchestra Concert, and, um, the Watten Creek Spring Concert, and the Junior High Art Show, and their Science Fair. So, uh, make sure you check the district calendar, and we'll have all the dates and times for those, um, upcoming events. And I do have, um, an email that we received from Mr. Potter um, about the PA Governor's STEM Team news. Um, he was very excited to share that Exeter's Pennsylvania Governor's STEM Team won first place at the state level um, competition on Wednesday, April nineteenth. The team was one of twenty teams invited to present their solutions in Harrisburg out of an original seventy-five teams um, who originally entered the competition. For this competition, the team worked with a park ranger from the Army Corps of Engineers at Blue Marsh Lake to develop a water sampling ROV to assist with the lake's harmful, harmful algal bloom management plan. The design was meant to improve the water quality testing process that park rangers must complete by making it more efficient and prevent rangers from having to wade into the water to take samples and risk exposing themselves to toxins. So, um, four seniors participated and one junior, and this is the first time that the team has ever made it to the state level competition, and then they won first place. So, congratulations to them. Um, I also have a message from Mr. Legath. Um, the, um, athletics are, are still going this spring. We had, um, Teddy Snyder, who, who was actually just here for basketball, while he also, um, finished with his tennis, um, du- duo, Tu- Teddy and Jake, they finished fourth in districts and qualified for the PIA double-A, three-A doubles in Hershey starting May twenty-third. The Boys and Girls Track and Field had fourteen athletes qualify for the District Three meet in She- Shepensburg this weekend. Softball plays next Monday in the first round of districts at home at four-thirty. The Boys Volleyball Team hosts Governor Mifflin tomorrow night for the County Championship. And they also qualified for districts, which will start also at Exeter on Thursday, May twenty-fifth. Um, the Girls Lacrosse plays at Wyomissing on Tuesday at four o'clock in the semifinals of Counties. And Boys Lacrosse plays at Twin Valley on Tuesday at seven in the semifinals for Counties. And this news is just in, the baseball team has qualified for District Three Tournament, which will start on Friday, May nineteenth. So, um, we're off into the postseason for our spring sports. So, that concludes my sub- report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great news. Uh, ECEF, Dr. Battler.
Dr. Herring, I wonder if I could, uh, jump in here.
Please.
Uh, given that the, Allison, did you say that the STEM team won the state champ? I'm wondering, I mean, we've had other state championships, champions in here. Could we, Dr. Haller, bring them in here?
Could we add them to the list for the June, um, champion celebration?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, great. Thank you.
All right, so ECEF, just letting you know that this, uh, Friday is the Food Truck Festival. It's for, it's at Exeter Township Senior High and the junior, in the junior parking lot, I'm sorry. From four until nine for an incredible night of charity food and fun. There are too many food truck vendors for me to list. Plus, dunk your favorite or least favorite principal, administrator, or teacher in the dunk tank, starting at four PM, starting with Dr. Haller. We did promise that she would be first.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Hamburger, no, I'm sorry. BCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mr. Fiedler.
Uh, just one administrative item. We, uh, as a JOC, Joint Operating Committee, all submitted our evaluations of, uh, Mike Stauffer, the Executive Director. And, uh, the results of those will be reviewed at a future meeting. The next meeting will be, uh, Wednesday of next week.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, Dr. Hamburger, can you cover BCIU Board of Directors and legislative needs?
Certainly. Um, but Dr. Haller, Haller, our next, um, or, I'm sorry, Doc- Dr. Herring. Our next meeting of the BCIU, uh, Board is scheduled for this Thursday, May eighteenth, it's seven PM. Um, and in terms of the legislative report, uh, I wanna talk a little bit about what I see as some pretty exciting new legislation. Uh, House Bill one-thirty-seven. Um, this is being introduced by, uh, State Representative, uh, Fiedler. Uh, she's, uh, a representative from Philadelphia. And this will create a grant program to expand the use of solar energy at school facilities across Pennsylvania, something we've been trying to do. Um, the grant program is called Solar, uh, for Schools. And it would issue grants to schools for solar energy projects. I- it includes the cost for the equipment, the installation, the maintenance, pretty much everything associated with the installation of the system. And it would make available about five hundred million dollars, if this, uh, bill goes through, five hundred million dollars available to Pennsylvania schools uh, for the installation of solar programs. We all know some of the benefits, and we've talked about it, and it's really exciting, uh, to see that this is actually coming to fruition. Um, the bill really is gonna be, it, right now, it's referred to the Committee on Environmental Resources and Energy. And, uh, we have to get it out of committee, but that's, that's a really important, uh, bill. Uh, um, Mr. Feike and I had a chance to actually meet with, uh, the bills, uh, 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 the primary author of the bill, um, Republic, Rep- Representative Fiedler, and we went to the Bethlehem School District and actually saw the, um, one of the installations that has been yielding some real benefits for that district. I mean, obviously, we know about this cost savings, and they were pretty much validated in, um, some of these visitations. Um, you know, one of the interesting things, too, is that this is one of those things, this is one of those projects and, and programs that is being, uh, I think, getting a lot of support by many, at many different levels. Um, the trade unions were there, which was interesting to see, and they were, and, and they, uh, uh, AFL-CIO and IBEW and, and some of these other, you know, major trade groups were, 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 uh, were present. Uh, there were environmental groups that were present, like, uh, Penn Futures and the Sierra Club. Um, you know, there were obviously educators, and there were other legislators who were there, who were really excited about it. I think it has the potential to have, um, bipartisan support, and I think it, uh, would really go a long way. Obviously, you know, districts are, are interested in saving money, and this is a real cost savings opportunity for school districts. And then, and then there are other benefits, you know, with, I think, stimulation to the economy associated with, uh, um, more jobs and opportunities, you know, for these installations a- as well as the environmental impact of reducing carbon emissions. So, very excited about it. I'll try to keep the board posted in terms of how this legislative is moving forward. And I know Mr. Feike's excited about applying for that, uh, grant as soon as it's made available through the legislature. So. Um, also, primary election tomorrow, uh, so a part of my legislative report would not be complete without at least, uh, making that comment. Make sure everybody comes out and votes tomorrow. Really important election, obviously. We have, uh, board members as, uh, who are up for reelection and others who are, are sought out to be on the board, so. Uh, good luck to everybody who's running, uh, in the primary tomorrow.
Thank you.
All for my report.
Thank you. Township and Boroughs, I'm Mr. Mel.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Uh, one thing I did wanna bring up was that the, uh, uh, Exeter Township Supervisors had actually, uh, uh, voted to advertise, um, to sunset their LURDA ordinance. Uh, that, that's over there. I don't know if anyone's familiar here with the LURDA. But I, 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 I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's some people very familiar with LURDA. Um, but it's, uh, yes, the, uh, it, it, local economic revitalization tax assistance, and that's basically some, uh, tax payment program, uh, to encourage people to, uh, either build in, uh, I don't wanna say dilapidated, but, you know, uh, uh, areas that potentially are having, uh, a hard time building or, um, but, and also, uh, uh, just taking care of older buildings and, and kind of revitalizing them. Um, the board is scheduled to vote on, uh, amending, uh, and essentially sunsetting that LURDA ordinance on May twenty-second. Uh, Mrs. Montane, uh, was actually, uh, ahead of this, and she also, uh, alerted us to a resolution that we passed. And if you read our resolution, it actually is referencing, um, uh, the map and other areas of that township ordinance. So, essentially, we would want to, um, also vote to, uh, remove that resolution.
Yes, it, assuming that the township goes through with sunsetting theirs.
Correct, correct. So, i- if that does happen on May twenty-second, is that, um, something we could potentially see as a special voting meeting item then? Um, in June, for, in, ahead of the Cal?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we could potentially, yeah. I, I just don't know if there's any timing there, essentially, it's.
You wouldn't want anybody to make an application to you in between when they've sunsetted.
Correct.
Theirs and ours still exist.
So, yeah, I, that, that would be my preference to, to put it on, uh, as a special voting meeting item.
Uh, Mr. Mel?
Yes.
The, the verb sunsetting, is that the same as deep sixteen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, you can, at, at any time, John. All right, and that, Dr. Herring, that's it for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Next would be public comments, but no one signed up, so at this point, would anyone on the board like to be heard?
Dr. Herring, I'd just like to say one thing. You know, it was kinda neat today because we always talk about community and, and how we can get our Exer and St. Lawrence community involved in the. and and how we can get our Exeter and St. Lawrence community involved in the things we do as a district. And it was great to see our music program and our, you know, recognition for for Coach today. But, you know, in general, we we hear month after month after month about all the extracurricular athletics, musics, the liberal arts, the academic extracurriculars. And I think it's a big pride for us in Exeter, and I think that this is one of the things that brings our community together, so it's great to see that and publicize it. And I would, I would ask everybody out here to, you know, continue to spread that word. And anybody that was at a playoff basketball game, whether it was five hours away or or in our own backyard, could see the seas of blue, um, overshadowing everything else. So just wanted to say that that's a great thing to see with our community coming out and supporting the district. So, thank you.
I, uh, am not a devotee of social, uh, media, but my wife pointed out a, uh, a string in it wa- recently, and I had said earlier that I hold Christie responsible for everything, so, uh, listen up. The string started out with a post on some other medium where they showed pictures of the prom attendees and then proceeded to berate and generally try to make fools of those, uh, attendees, either the way their dress, the way their hair was, whatever it was. I am happy to say that the personnel at the high school have taken some positive steps to resolve that and to hold the individuals responsible for it. Was, to hold the individuals that did it responsible for it. Now, I'm pretty, despite popular opinion, I'm a pretty, uh, sensitive guy. And, uh.
Okay.
I told you.
There's a lot of things I call you Bob.
You just don't know me well enough. I went to my fiftieth, uh, class reunion a few years ago, and there was a girl there who I remembered from our class, and my wife started talking to her and, uh, said how I felt and looked back on it with great, uh, favor, that it was a good time in my life. Well, the girl said, I don't remember anything good about it because I was constantly picked on. Now, this string about the prom went on to elaborate. Some students said they reported it to, uh, people they thought were, uh, principals, not the principals, but trustworthy, uh, faculty members. And the parents talked about reporting it to different people at the school system and being told that we can't do anything about that. Well, I know we can't do anything about social media, Facebook doesn't listen to us or anybody else. But there were things that were done in my day disregarding that young lady who, uh, who carried, uh, a hurt feeling for fifty years. Now would be fifty-five, I don't know if she's still alive or not. We owe our children a safe, and I don't mean that the walls aren't going to fall in, I mean that the other kids are not going to make their life miserable. We owe that to them. When I was in school, the teachers used to stand outside their classroom door and more or less regulate us as we went between classes. Hearing and putting a stop to anything that they felt was untoward. So, I'd be glad to give you some more rec- of my recommendations, if you remember by two by four, but I would ask you to see what we can do. I remember sitting in a, uh, contract negotiations, and, uh, we were talking about discipline and everything, and I was flat-told, or we were flat-told, that that was not our job. And that was faculty. So, but that's been several years, and hopefully the attitude has changed. But I would exhort you to do anything in your power to ensure that everyone understands it is all of our responsibility to care for those kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Without anybody else left to speak? Okay, um, I want to piggyback on what Dr. Hamburger said. Please go out tomorrow and vote, have your voice heard. Our next board meeting will be Tuesday, June sixth, at six P M for a committee of a whole. Hearing, no objections, we'll adjourn. Have a good evening.